This conference will now be recorded.
I think it was worthwhile waiting a few minutes and we can now proceed with the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for February 202024. And the first thing is a call to order in the roll call.
Member Ray?
Here.
Vice Chair, Herbert, sorry.
Here.
Member DeBassett?
Here.
And Chair Carey.
Here. We all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, we give the opportunity for public comment. And Mr. Brown.
I am. Terry Brown Hubbard, I thought that won't take long because you've been late started. But I did speak earlier, one of the last meetings on this property at 5015 Old Ocean, which there's been a change in the ownership. The deed was given up in lieu of default. And so the lender took the property back and boarded it up. So it has plywood covering on this uninhabitable structure. It's really in bad shape. The reason why I'm bringing it up is so that people don't say publicly, well, no one said anything about this to me. This property needs to be reviewed for violation of state statute regarding the vegetation. It's there. It's got Australian pine. It's got Brazilian pepper. It's got the snake plant. It's got a lot of alien plants that shouldn't be there. They're on the dune and they need to be removed. And no one's ever done anything with the previous owner because I guess they felt sorry for him. He hasn't, by the way, owned it since August. And this guy who now has the deed probably thinks he has development rights, but that's a different zone than any other zone in town in terms of the footprint of the property. So my desire is to have someone, code enforcement, to get to the guy who's now the owner and remove the vegetation. The structure's going to have to be torn down, no matter what they decide to do with it. But it's a big problem. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else have any public comment? We close public comment and now we review the minutes. We have the minutes of December 19, 2023. Do we have any comments or amendments needed? Any corrections? Hearing none. Is there a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second?
Here.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
We have a quasi judicial hearing coming before us for a development plan review of 67 Spanish River Drive. I will read the quasi judicial procedure. The proceeding is now called to order. And this is agenda item number two. At this time, any ex parte communication should either be disclosed by identifying the subject of the communication and identifying the person, group, or entity with whom the communication took place or any correspondence by providing the town clerk, by be provided to the town clerk and made part of the public record. In addition, each member of the commission may identify the existence of any investigations or site visits he or she has conducted or any expert opinion received and disclose any conflicts of interest in this matter. Does anyone have any ex parte that they want to share? Thank you. We will proceed with the hearing on this matter. The town clerk, please swear in the witnesses.
Well, anyone wishing to speak on the panel, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
When you are called forward, please state your name and address clearly for the record and whether or not you've been sworn in and please speak directly into the microphone.
Okay. Town Planner, can you give us your report?
Good morning, Chair, Board Members, Correa Mormon Town Planner. This is the development plan review for an addition to the existing home at 67 Spanish River Drive. It includes demolition of an existing 500 plus or minus square foot structure and the addition of approximately 2,200 square feet or a total of about 6,500 square feet. The development plan review recommended approval with conditions. The conditions have been applied with in the revision that was submitted as part of your agenda packet for the zoning review. That was a minor change to the south elevation of the addition, which is in your packet. And this recommendation is for approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I think you just said this, but I want to clarify. So the elevations we are looking at have the changes that were requested in red in the document?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. So next would be the building official. Manny, do you have anything to report?
No, my calculations had submitted from the plan while we did their zoning requirements.
Thank you. And Town Engineer Tara, do you have any comments or report?
Tara Bramper, Town Engineer. No, drainage lines, they're good. They met all of the town code, but there is just some minor engineering landscape plan conflicts that need to be revised, which can be done during building review.
Okay. I have an engineering question, which I'll also ask the applicant, but ask you is it's my understanding that the adjoining property to the south, number 69, Spanish River Drive, will be coming before us. Is that going to create, and I'm assuming there'll need to be a retaining wall along the south property line. Is that anticipated here? Will that change the engineering if these two projects are?
So it's on the other side of the property?
No, it is on this side of the property.
Yeah.
On the south side.
On the south side.
So, and so you just can't answer that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll ask the architect when he comes forward because I think it may be the same architect for both projects.
Oh.
So that'd be helpful. Just hoping there's some coordination of this effort.
Yeah, we hope, but same architects, yeah.
So, thank you. Now's the opportunity for the applicant to make a presentation.
My name is Richard Bremer. I'm with RWV Linares Architecture, 3,000 North Military Trail. That's in Bopra Toone, Florida. I did get sworn in. So today I'm here to discuss the addition to the existing one-story family residence at 67 Spanish River Drive, the Malinowski residence. If we can scroll, if we can scroll to the boundary survey, which is right after the landscape plans.
The boundary survey is the first page of our Dixie Blueprints package.
Okay, all right. So the addition's going to be on the south side of the existing one-story ranch Bermuda Style home. The existing home itself is approximately 3,200 square feet AC and overall it's about 3,900 square feet AC. I'm sorry, overall square footage under roof. It's a three-bedroom home, two-car garage. It does have a detached one-story structure, about 540 square feet. There is an existing circular drive, which is going to remain. The pool, the existing pool is to the south side of the main structure, which is also going to remain. At this point, there is no outside covered area to the existing main house. And the overall site square footage is 21,700 square feet and the rear of the property has easterly exposure. If we, if you want to look at your architectural site plan and the 822.0 floor plan, the addition, the new addition is going to be approximately 200, I'm sorry, 2,185 square feet under roof. The one-story structure is going to be connected to the existing house with an exterior roofed breezeway. This addition will blend and match the style and details of the existing one-story Bermuda Style home. The addition will consist of a two-car garage with storage, a guest bedroom slash office with a bathroom, a club room lounge area, and a covered lanai with seating and a summer kitchen. The addition will be added to the existing home and will now have a combined square foot total of 61, I'm sorry, 6,131 square feet overall. And again, this sits on a 21,700 square foot lot. The addition area sits within the required setbacks of 25 feet to the front, 25 feet to the rear, 15 feet to the sides. The addition AC finished floor elevation is at 10 feet NABD, which meets the FEMA flood zone height requirements. The garage portion of the addition, it's six feet NABD. And then the existing edge of pavement is at 3.8 feet NABD. So that's going to give the new driveway to the proposed garage area of a 5.5% slope. The new connecting breezeway will step down to the existing, from the existing house towards a new garage side entry and steps up towards the existing pool area, which is at 6.8 NABD. The new addition covered lanai in the rear on the east side of the addition will be at 9.5 NABD and step down to an uncovered patio area at eight and a half feet NABD, which that area steps down to the existing yard elevations of approximately six feet NABD. And then the rear, existing rear and walk areas that go down to the dock is going to stay the same. If you want to look at the renderings, A0.1 through A0.3, and then the elevation sheets in your packet of A3.0 and 3.1, the addition will be consistent with the existing simple coastal Bermuda Style of the existing home. This addition will enhance the existing structure by, but stay in character in regards to the massing, colors, the materials, and simple fenestration with the use of shutters and simple stucco detailing. The height and scale is sensitive to the existing structure, but also to the FEMA height requirements, trying to create a more human scale approach and feel from the street and to the surrounding neighbors. The front elevation of the addition stays consistent to the existing house with the same style garage doors, windows, shutters, roof tile. The rear of the addition will stay consistent with the style of fenestration, but bring in the area of covered, but open lanai space, which the existing house does not have. The south side elevation stays consistent with the existing fenestration feel and style of the existing home and landscape accordingly to keep privacy to the south side neighbor. And going back to your question in regards to the proposed house that's going to come on 69, there is going to be a retaining wall there. So there's not going to be any kind of issues in regards to the grade elevations to each.
I really appreciate you walking through all the grade elevations that around. What is the grade elevation on that side yard?
Offhand is probably going to be pretty close to what's, so that finished floor obviously is going to be at 10 also. So it's going to probably be pretty close to what 67 is going to be. But the actual retaining wall isn't going to be high. It's going to be probably eight to 10 inches off the ground.
Okay. Because we've seen many of these built around town that are
Yeah.
three, four, five feet.
No, it's not.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it'd just be kind of
Yeah.
a non-issue.
Right.
And then the landscaping you proposed will work fine with that?
Correct.
Okay.
And the, and if there is any change in the retaining wall, it's going to be according to the grade. So the retaining wall height will step and that will be on the plans and shown on the plans and I'll present that hopefully next month.
No, I'm glad it's the same architect doing both projects.
So then to continue, the rear, I'm sorry, the north elevation actually faces, of the addition faces the existing pool and creates an open field with a connecting breezeway, the covered entry, the covered lanai, and the window and vertical shutter fenestration. So overall, the new addition to the existing home, the hardscape and well-appointed existing and new landscaping keeps with the existing character and style, but enhances the surrounding streetscape neighborhood. So at this time, if you have any questions, and then also Louis from Majestic Views here to discuss any hardscape or landscape questions you may have.
I'll ask one right off. Is your ceiling height in your garage just 15 feet? Why is such a high garage?
Just for, in regards to if he wants to do storage, he's going to hang storage down and also if he's going to have car lift.
Okay. So just to offer the opportunity for that?
Yeah.
Was the height of the, I guess that would be the west elevation increased in order to accommodate that?
Was it increased? Well, normally for a lift, you need to have at least 12 to 12 and a half feet.
Okay.
So just in regards to the architecture and because of how I wanted to mass it, I kind of raised it and then dropped the one side to the front down and brought that around.
Yes. Because I'm a little surprised that the west elevation is the highest ridgeline when it's the same elevation as a single-story house.
Right.
And I wanted to know your thoughts of why the
Yeah, well, that's
why you ended up with the high ridgeline
That's the main reason.
to accommodate the 15-foot ceiling. Commissioners, do you have questions? Mark, do you want to start off or end guy?
Yeah, I was just trying to really get all the components together because there's a lot of elevation changes there. Yeah, I was just reviewing it a little while he was describing the different elevation changes and just trying to make sure I understood how those interact. I think I understand it. Looks like a great improvement.
The one thing I also, you know, try to do is obviously treat each elevation with some kind of fenestration and character and not, you know, the typical, just do the front and do the rear. And obviously that's something that you guys
And we really appreciate that. That's been a problem in the past with wonderful front and rear elevations and the neighbors get the short stick.
Exactly.
Yeah. Sydney, would you have any?
My question was actually on the roof height of the garage. So that explanation works. Other than that, I don't see any issues.
It would be nice if you talked us through the landscaping.
Yes.
Louis.
For the record, my name's Louis LaHose, Majestic Views Landscape Architects. We made two efforts on this. Number one, with the levels that we were talking about on the exterior hardscape, we made sure that there was no walls or differentiation of elevations more than 30 inches. So that's why we have a series of steps going from the 10-foot NABD to the nine and a half on the covered area, then the eight, and then five and a half. You know, it just kind of breaks it down, kind of builds up the height so you don't have one big wall like you were talking about of three feet or whatever. That said, we made an effort, because the owner loves his seagrass and everything, you know, to pretty much preserve all the existing vegetation, which majority of it is seagrapes on the waterside, you know, he trims them really nicely, cleans them, shakes them, et cetera. And also in the front in the garage. So that's, that's a nice screen. We did have to give up some of our existing landscape that's within the right of way. I guess it's a code requirement, you know, so, you know, the swales would not be obstructed, you know, et cetera. But that said, we have a common hedge, a potocarpus hedge between the 69 and 67 on the south side. And then basically the other majority of landscape that we're proposing is on the north side. It's underneath the existing seagrave. So it's, and it's very textural and very leaf color, you know, so we don't have the maintenance, you know, of, and also salt tolerant. Okay? So we don't have, so we have stuff like, you know, some bromeliads and alochias and then some low ground covers as ficus green island and neos, et cetera, that just kind of meander in, into plant with the plant. It's also blocking and screening the 30-inch walls. It's really just one of them, which is from the upper level seating patio, outdoor patio area going down to the dock elevation. That's only 30 inches. We have a potocarpus hedge in front of that and then it kind of slopes down to the textural leaf color planting. So that's it.
Do you have anything on the north boundary? Are you just, are you
On the north boundary?
Are you leaving the existing?
It's all existing. We're not touching anything on the north or the existing building in front of the building. If you drive by there, it's very nice. The stuff that we're removing is actually very nice. So.
Okay. I've got
Yeah, go ahead.
Can I ask, can I ask a couple of questions? So when a project, and maybe Corey, you can help with this, a project of this nature, I don't know the, there's seawall height here, right? And we've talked about it over the years about, you know, improving the height, increasing the height of the seawalls in the community, right, which are necessary. And does that, where does that fall into this kind of renovation or new construction project?
There's nothing in the zoning code at least that would address that. The seawall heights would be addressed, I would expect, and this is a little outside my area of knowledge, will be during reconstruction of the seawall. But there is nothing in the zoning regulations that would address the seawall height.
Because, yeah, there's, there, I mean, this is, I hate to say it this way, this is the opportunity at which time when people are making these kind of, you know, major renovations or a new home, that they, you know, bring this, bring the seawall up to a certain, you know, a standard. And I, and I don't know anything about this. I don't know what, you know.
It's an excellent comment because here, here's what I observed is that the neighbor, the 59, just raised the seawall. And so that creates additional burden when, when one goes up, where's the water going to flow? It's going to flow over the seawall that wasn't raised. It's a, so
Or maybe you're playing a raising seawall here. Maybe, I don't know. I don't know that.
No, it's not in our scope at this time, but we have made a professional effort that in the future, he can raise his wall by 30 inches, which is what the neighbor to the south is doing, you know, to match that without necessarily affecting anything except possibly five to whatever feet from the existing seawall. Because 30 inches is kind of normal, you know, to go on top of the existing one and, and give you that height, but it wasn't in the scope. So hence, right now, we are stepping down the additional feet, 30 inches, five of those, four to five of those steps will be eliminated, you know, when the owner decides to come in on the separate permit, you know, to raise the seawall.
Okay. Well, maybe it's, we should talk about it in the workshop, Rick.
Yeah, I think, I think it's a good workshop.
I mean, this is, this is a, I'm just going to, I only rebuilt my seawall in 2016 and I haven't, I'm going to rebuild my dock this summer again because I put it down at a level that I thought was okay and the water's
What level are you at right now?
Oh, my, I got, I mean, my finished floor elevation's almost 12 and a half or 13. I mean, I tore it down and rebuilt the house. So my seawall is high in back, but I might, I put my dock so I could get down to the boat, but now the, the water, and I've lived there from, since 2000, so I've seen the water rise. And I think that, you know, we need to address this seawall issue in the town, especially where I live, because we don't have any protection. We don't have a seawall.
Yeah. Please add something. You've seen this.
It's a young family that Malinowskis and they do think in the near future they were going to do something to the main house also. So we kind of created the design accordingly and he understands that seawall is and potentially is an issue, but it's going to have to happen in the future for, for them in regards to taking care of, raising the seawall.
Okay. So we haven't seen the last of this.
Probably not, no.
So, Mr. Chair, and I think this might be your point. This project didn't trigger substantial improvement in the 50% threshold, but what some cities have done is if you trigger substantial improvement threshold or you redevelop the property, they do require an increase in the seawall, but I do think it's an excellent issue to bring up because we don't have that addressed in our code right now. And I think we're seeing other cities that are doing that and requiring that, so when you make a substantial improvement, you're also required to increase your seawall height.
That's FEMA.
Do we have information as to what other cities have done so we can
Certainly.
Talk intelligently at the workshop.
Well, you can kind of get around it by doing phase one and then phase two like they're talking about as well, right?
Really, you really can't because how FEMA works is that if you do it in phases, you have to go back and add what you did for the first phase. So you have that 50% rule, so it's, it's kind of mute point if you're going to try to do that.
My second question for you is the, the existing septic field that's on the north side, I believe the north side of property, is to remain?
It is. No, no, so the north side is to remain. That is for the laundry removal.
Okay. And has that, how does that been checked to make sure it's functioning?
We had Bradford septic out there and they checked the
Is there any, again, Corey, are there any specs from, from the town standpoint to check something like that?
That would be a health department review.
Okay.
We included in our review and that is something that Tara will look at during the engineering review to be sure that there's adequate space for the septic drain field. But that's, that is something that is reviewed and permitted through the health department.
Okay. Just that put, it's existing, as you said, there's no, there, it's an existing, probably how old, when is the house built?
40s.
Yeah. So the septic field's probably
Yeah.
old and not functioning great.
Well, it's
Just for the laundry.
It's been renovated. So I think actually that septic area, because it's a new laundry area, I think that's much newer than the house, actually.
Get closer to the microphone.
That's all my questions. Thank you.
Any other questions? Any further comment from the applicant? Thank you very much. Does anyone on staff have a final comment? Hearing none. Do I go to call, call, excuse me?
Just a clarification.
Just a clarification. So about the south property, 69, so if you look at the engineering plan on sheet two, it shows at that property line that the elevation will be at five. So I didn't know, you were asking about the wall on 69?
Yeah, and I think he answered the question, is that the elevation differential's not going to be that great, hopefully.
I didn't know what that great meant.
Yeah, I would, let's see. We've seen much bigger.
Yes, yes, yes.
It, it was much important, it was just being taken into account that, that, in, in some cases, I've wondered why, you know, a wall gets built and then another house comes along and fills it in right up to that wall, and then we've got a buried wall.
Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Brown, I will make an exception for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, just out of curiosity, legally, I, I think the property appraiser's gonna catch up with the property eventually and stick it to them with the taxes, but does the fact that it's attached with a breezeway make it one structure or two? Does it say on the property appraiser, building one, building two? I mean, how does that work in that zone? You have two buildings, right, attached by a breezeway?
Yeah. It's, it's a good question. It's a, it sounds like they have a strategic plan for this property that will address that in the future, so. It, maybe, I, I don't think we should try to impose on them the 50% rule if the, if the town's already satisfied themselves that it doesn't apply.
Yeah, I'm not concerned about that, I'm concerned about the idea that you have two buildings on one lot. You dig?
Well, they currently have two buildings on one lot.
Correct.
That, that's existing condition.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
For, for clarification, Mr. Chairman, just, the, the definitions in the town's zoning code provide for any structure that's attached to the principal structure, it becomes part of the principal structure. It doesn't define what attachment is, so in this case, attachment would be the root structure for breezeway. So that's, so it's not an accessory structure, it is part of the principal building.
Thank you. Thanks for the clarification.
To the way the property appraiser reviews it, I have, I don't know.
Thank you. We will now declare the quasi judicial hearing closed. Now, we have an opportunity, if there's any further comments that any of the commissioners need to make, or I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the applicant's plans. 67 Spanish River Drive.
Incorporating in the staff comments.
Incorporing staff comments.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
And thank you very much. Appreciate it. You've got a nice project, and you did a nice presentation.
Yeah.
And I really appreciate having the landscape architects here. Our next item is to discuss a meeting date change for the March meeting. Apparently, we scheduled in conflict with the town elections that'll be occurring on March 19.
Also the presidential primary.
Yeah, so. I think they should move their date. We have two options here, more than that if we so choose, but the ones proposed are either moving it a week earlier to Tuesday, March 12, or a week later to Tuesday, March 26. I will not be in town on the 12th, so my preference would be the 26th, unless that creates conflicts with others.
26 looks good for me, Mr. Chairman.
I prefer the 26 as well.
26 is wonderful.
Okay, now that creates a quorum, and hopefully, our other commissioner can also meet on the 26th. And he may be conflicted on that applicant also. Thank you. So mark your calendars, it's the 26th. This is the opportunity we have for, for commissioner comment. The first comment I have is, is that for, on April 8, at 10:00 AM, we will have a workshop. I think we should need, need to be feeding the town clerk what items we think are important. So let's talk, it'd be a first workshop for some of the commissioners, and the purpose of the workshop is to give us an opportunity to listen to what the town commission would like planning and zoning to be addressing over the next 12 months, or at least six months. Typically, we've done this a couple of times a year, and it would be for us to share ideas that we would like them to endorse. And when we say that, we're, we're limited to reviewing the things that come before us, or the things that the town commission has asked us to put on our agenda. So if there's something we have ourselves that we think is important, and we would like to see planning and zoning do this, the workshop's the opportunity to get that direction from the town commission. And it also is important for staff so that they can set their priorities, because when we add new agenda items, it requires additional staff time, and if it's third-party consultants, it's extra cost to the town. So, so we need to take an opportunity and think about those things, and maybe we can talk a little bit at the next meeting, but we can talk right now, any, any things that we think should be there. Let's, let's start making our list.
Mr. Chairman, with the date of the March meeting, I would actually, I believe Kelly and I, since any research needs to go in, we would need any topics that you want them to consider to us no later than March 15.
Okay.
So anything that you think of after this evening, after this morning's meeting, that you would like us to have on that agenda, and have any researcher, if you have research of your own, we need it by March 15. That way, staff can gather any research we need to, and we can make sure the packets go out well in advance, so people can review them.
But you don't need a consensus from us, any commissioner can pass on something.
Right, any of you, any of you can pass it on, just get it to either Kelly or I, so that we can look at it, and if you have information that you've already done or already have related to that topic, pass that on as well.
Great, thank you.
So I've seen a constant theme where driveways on smaller lot sizes need to be widened, or that's been requested, is that an issue you want to consider?
I, I think it's an issue, and I think it probably, and again, I defer to the two experts over here, I think it's gonna come into looking at two particular areas in town, the multifamily zone and the overlay for the ocean view area. Those have seemed to be the place that it's the highest density, and we want to make sure that, that that, now, I don't know whether, I don't think prior to the workshop, we need to, to do any research, but that would be my suggestion at the workshop, is that we put some energy into those two areas and look at them, and especially relative to off-street parking. But it could be setbacks, it could be a number of things that I think that they, both of those have different setbacks, and they're, they're just different, and they're not as familiar to us as the commission, because we don't, I think, I've seen one or two in ocean view in the six years I've been here, and just the one multifamily one that we had in December. So part of it's in education, and, but to me, it's a safety thing. That, just simple as that. If, if emergency vehicles can't get up sailfish due to parked cars, then shame on us that we didn't set the codes to, to, to avoid that when we had opportunity. And we know that these two districts are gonna be, I think there'll be activity in these two districts over the next few years, because there's the opportunity to take some of these smaller properties and, and put more density there. And with more density becomes more parking issues, so.
And also with more density, like the project we just approved at 67 Spanish, how are we dealing with the impact of drainage? Because obviously, that neighborhood has historically had some issues further to the west, and I don't know in a comprehensive way, with additional buildings and, you know, less percolation on the site, how that has been addressed. I'm kind of new at this, but.
Tara, can you talk to us a little bit about? It always seems like, to me, we're putting a lot on the lot, and then the staff comes back and says, oh, it meets all codes, and, and it has plenty, plenty of, plenty of green areas. And it remind me, do we count septic fields within the percolation?
Yes.
That seems like double counting to me.
Yeah, and, and those are built up high, so it doesn't really, it can't be storage. And you need separation from, you know, the, the drainage and the landscape and all of that. So you're putting all of that in 35%. So the lots meet that, but the problem is the roads, and so we're constantly now looking for areas where we can ask for easements, so we can put more outfalls. And I think that's kind of where we're at now, there's some areas, we're talking about building up the road, but you have to have all of the lots built up. So that's another way of helping with drainage.
I don't think we're very aggressive on our swales. Corey lives in North Palm Beach, as my son does, and the area between the sidewalk and the street in North Palm Beach is a real swell, and, and it helps manage water on, you know, streets that don't have curb and gutter, and, you know, yet I see new houses built and a little bit of a swell, which seems to kind of disappear as the grass fills in, and, and I don't know it's helping us the way.
No, that, I think, is a zoning issue. Like, we need to be more on top of people that are filling them in, putting trees there. And also, I don't know what the right of way with is where else you're talking about, because that gives you much more room to build a swell that is, has more storage.
I, I know that some parts of town, there isn't a lot of extra space, but there's other places, like the property we reviewed today, there's quite a distance between the road and the property line, and, but, but it ends up being people, what people perceive as their front yard, myself included.
Yeah, I know, I think landscape is one of the bigger issues. And also, if you have somebody new put a swell in, but either side of them doesn't have a swell, then it really doesn't do very much for the transportation of the street. You have to wait until they redevelop to put a swell in, I mean, unless we go and do our own swales and build our own system.
Yeah.
And that might have to be.
We, we, we're gonna have to do something at some point. It's got, it's either that or flooded streets.
Well, the, the streets are flooded already.
Yeah.
So we're flooding them more by putting more improvements on the lots that impact that neighborhood.
Yes.
So shouldn't, I mean, it just, I, I, I look at those streets, and they're trying to get pumps and everything else, and the streets are all undermined, and I don't know if we're really doing a comprehensive view of certain sections. And I hate to say it, but, you know, until there is something, maybe there ought to be a moratorium, because I feel really sorry for those people who live in those streets that are flooded constant, and adding to it just doesn't make sense.
Yeah, but then you talk about sea level rising, that's like kind of another issue that impacted, like.
Yeah, but adding to it, yeah, I agree, yeah, the seawalls.
Outfalls, I, I mean, it wouldn't be a bad idea to do like an overall master system, water system of the town, and really look at the areas that really need to be addressed.
Kind of like a master drainage plan?
Yeah, like a master, I think one was done in like the 80s, I think.
Not sure how old it is.
Yeah.
But it's not working.
The new, the new construction, though, what I'm seeing, though, is when you're putting the drainage across the front of the driveway, and you're having the storage, that really works pretty well.
Yeah.
Right, I find it, like, I, I gotta tell you something, I, you know, all, all the newer houses that have that, there's no flooding in front of their, in front of their driveway areas.
Right.
And that really captures, I was shocked how much, how much of the rain it captures. So while we're talking about maybe the new houses, you know, and maybe the backside, the water coming out the sides or the back or something, but the front, those systems that you guys require really, really capture a lot of that water that's coming off. And so you don't see, on a new home, you don't see, you don't see puddling where the street meets their driveway a lot, right? You see that a lot on the older home, but you don't see that as much on the newer homes.
And the, I don't know when we started requiring, that those driveway systems have to be connected to something, even like the new driveways, all right, you need to put the French drain in.
Yes.
So that is connected to something, because it used to just be there and not connected to it.
Yeah.
Now, they, yeah, they're definitely more functional.
You're, you're right, the ones with the French drains were, the, the first ones we did, they did, they were just, you know, like, what's that for?
Going back to what we just reviewed, what's the difference really between new construction and what we just allowed, which is about an 80% increase of their repair?
They did have.
Do they have the same containment?
Yeah, they have exfiltration, yeah.
So they have the same system?
They have a system, yeah, a French drain, and then exfiltration as it goes all the way on the south.
Well, that, going forward, that'd be good to have the presenter maybe advise us that that's what they incorporate.
Yeah, Tara, the engineers don't seem to show up, so.
Yeah.
But I can tell you, like, I, you know, I make sure that they, even that addition, even a driveway, like, you need to have something that's capturing it from going into the right way.
Yeah, because there's gonna be more impervious than there is there now.
Yes.
And it go, it has to go somewhere.
Right. I mean, we could bump up our impervious, but I don't know. Bump it down.
Well, more to answer your question, like, on the new construction side, they have it, but where the existing home is, they don't have it.
Right.
Left it just as it is. So there, you've got, you've got a little of both going on there, right? And so, to your point, maybe it's better, when they do something like this, they put it in in both locations, right? And, and I don't know, because the systems do seem to work, as I say, I, I just think they're working today.
For the driveway, yeah.
Yes, for the driveways, the drainage of the driveways.
So just a question again to staff, is that would it been within our latitude as commission in reviewing this, to have asked for the drainage, driveway drainage on the portion that wasn't part of the application change?
The addition.
Well, I think for this one, since it didn't hit the substantial improvement threshold, legally, you couldn't require it, you can always ask, but I think if it hits substantial improvement, would they have?
Yeah, we always have them.
They'd have to increase it, so that, that would be the difference, and it, maybe that's partly, looking at this issue is determining whether we want to reduce the substantial threshold, improvement threshold, instead of a G and a 50%, something a little bit different. That's a bigger issue, because then that kicks in a lot more requirements than just drainage, so you could look at it maybe for, perhaps for just a drainage issue.
Yeah, it's, it's a tricky one.
Yeah.
Thank you, Tara.
You also have your seawalls that you want to do a dress.
Yeah.
Parking, if you've talked about.
And we talked about parking.
Length of construction, we talked about last time, right?
Let's, remind me?
We talked about last time, these, these, like at 113 South Island Drive, which is still just a, it's, it's, it's a, it's a bomb site.
I drove by that, I couldn't believe it.
Still's there, I mean, and they cleaned up, thank you guys, they cleaned up a little bit, but they haven't done, haven't really done anything, right?
They're not working currently, because they don't have a capacity. They have to come back before planning zone.
Yes.
And it comes to the same thing that Mr. Brown brought up in public comment. You know, that's kind of beyond the scope of this group, but we'd all like to see the town doing something about it, you know, and, you know.
That's the problem, you don't have anybody that does take it seriously. No billing official, no enforcement.
Well, I think that ultimately, it's your elected officials that, that, that have to set the tone, and either they. And either they support it or they don't. And that's that's, and if you don't find them supporting, then, you know, either have elected officials that you've, that's the elected process.
Perhaps our commission can encourage them.
Yes, that'd be good. Yeah, because it there's, you know, when you have to live in a neighborhood that has an eyesore, it's pretty frustrating. If any further comment? Thank you, everyone. It's nice to have a fairly light agenda that we can not feel pressed and get some things done. Call for adjournment?
Over.
All in favor? We have to stay in our seats. We have another meeting. Easy to overlook. I now convene the Town of Ocean Ridge, Florida Infrastructure Surtax Citizen Oversight Committee. Our first order is to approve the minutes from the meeting of March 2023. To I hear a motion to approve. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we have a report in front of us from the town. It's a report that the town staff has prepared for for us to send to the town commission regarding the infrastructure surtax expenditures. And you'll see this on page one is I will give it to to our town manager to give the brief report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The town commission, as we all know, appointed the Planning and Zoning Board to also be the Infrastructure Surtax Committee and was incorporated as a committee in fiscal year 2017 and has continued as that. And we have received funds since 2017. No funds have been expended out of the infrastructure surtax funds since we began collecting. And we have a total as of the end of FY '23, which was September 30, '23, It has always been the direction of this committee and the recommendation of this committee in the past to set that money aside for septic to sewer conversion. And I'm happy if that's what the commission wants to do. Again, is that a recommendation? However, as you know, we have a major waterline project on the north end of town that we have been working to construct. And it is an infrastructure project that is much needed. Plan to use the ARPA funds, which were roughly $900,000 that we received as ARPA funds for this project. But in our first round of bidding, the bids came in at 1.3 million, no, 1.5 million dollars and 2.8. Due to issues with the bidding, our recommendation to the commission was to reject those bids. And we bid them. We've made some changes to the bidding process. The commission did reject those bids and we are now in the bidding process again. We do not anticipate the second round of bidding that the bids will be lower than the 1.5, which was the lowest, than 1.3, which was the lowest bid. The infrastructure surtax on a countywide basis is set to expire in 2025, which is earlier than what was originally intended, but it had a maximum collection cap on it. And though there are communities as well as the county that are looking to renew this tax, it will have to go to a voter referendum for that to happen. Having collected nearly all of our funds for the time, it might be best if the commission is interested to make a recommendation to use this money to assist in funding the water main project on the north end of town. That way, we know where the money's coming from. There's no need for potential borrowing depending upon the cost or dipping into cash reserves otherwise.
Yeah, or we would have the option to just recommend that the funds be used at the discretion of the town commission.
You go, yes.
Yeah, one thing I noticed in looking, and I appreciate the backup of what some of the other towns did, at least one or maybe more than one, I saw that the town had combined some of their money with some of the money that the county had gotten from the 1% sales tax and and did projects together. Any way for us to tap in and kind of like one of these things matched givings? So I I'm a little concerned that construction costs are going up and we're just sitting on this money. And, you know, whatever we're earning, if we're earning five, construction cost is going up at 10 and we're falling behind.
We are. In terms of, you know, working with the county, the county has to have a project in the area. Right now, they don't have any projects other than work that they may be doing on the inlet park, which is all county properties. So it wouldn't make sense for us to do things there. F D O T owns both of the major roads through town. So again, the county is not going to have, you know, infrastructure. Unfortunately, we don't have infrastructure here that we could partner with the county on. No county roads through town that we can partner on that type of thing.
Good. Well, my feeling at this this point that we should be using these funds rather than sitting on them because their 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 buying power decreases because it's infrastructure and the price keeps going up. So I'm not going to make the motion, but my suggestion is that we give it to the town commission with their discretion on how to utilize the funds. It's purely a recommendation anyway. Our main, our main role here is to have shown that the funds are have oversight and we're providing that. Any questions?
Yeah, I read where was it this commission or was a city commission had actually earmarked the funds for the conversion of the sewer project?
We we had made a recommendation to that and that's the only power we have. And it's non-binding on the town commission. But we were, there had been a member of the commission that had also chaired the septic to sewer and thought very strongly about that that's where the funds should go. But no immediate progress is being done in that area by the town. So, you know, the money could sit there for another five years and.
Could these funds help advance that cause?
We did discuss last year during the budget process using these funds to do the preliminary design engineering. And the commission did not feel that that was something that they were interested in moving forward with at that time, which the design engineering is the next step for the septic to sewer. The commission has accepted the recommendations to hold it. And since you're making a recommendation, if you change from recommending septic sewer and just say at the commission's discretion, they still can continue to earmark and set aside the funds for septic to sewer. Or they could agree that maybe it's time to make a change and put the money towards the water main project, knowing that there's still some money that's going to come in and the potential for the infrastructure surtax to be extended.
Was there any estimate of what the drawings would cost for the sewer, the septic to sewer?
There wasn't a, there was a very spitball estimate that those drawings could cost up to $500,000 because we're talking about having to design an entire septic system for the town or sewer system for the town. So more than what a normal project's construction drawings and preliminary design would be, but less than, you know, what we had in hope.
So between the new water project that has a shortfall and the, I think the need to move forward on this septic to sewer, which has just been kicked down the road for how many years? 10? Maybe this is a chance to make a recommendation.
Make a motion to that.
Well, no, I'm just discussing it.
No, it's it's.
I'm happy to make that motion.
I think we should, I'd like your idea of, you know, putting it at the commission level. I would like to sense that we could maybe give the commission our recommendation be, let's hold 500,000 and let the let the commission use the, you know, recommend to them using the balance toward this new project. Some some type of way where we still keep some money in the account, but help the town out as well in their in their in their water main project.
I mean, historically, when these types of things go to, you know, we have money. You hear the sound that goes, it's gone.
Yes.
So I don't know. I just.
I I'm with, I'm with you. I could keep it there as well.
But I keep in mind that it is limited. It can only be spent on infrastructure. Even if the recommendation was to use at the commission's discretion, they couldn't decide to use it for building maintenance or anything.
But but there are other infrastructure projects, road improvements, drainage improvements. Yeah, I'm happy to live where there's drainage issues. So I would love to see it spent on drainage improvement. There are plenty of infrastructure things that the town needs.
And maybe some of this, these workshop items will bring some of these to the to the surface where we might want to make the recommendation to use some of these funds.
It certainly doesn't hurt anything to keep the septic sewer on the radar. I think it's kind of fallen off and and adding that to the recommendation. Whether it impacts anything, I'm doubtful. I'm a little cynical about septic sewer and I think that it's not until the state comes in and forces the town to convert that it'll ever happen. There's just, it's very expensive, complicated, and involves every homeowner and can have a lot of differing opinions about it. So it almost teets a third party to force it on on us like they have in the Keys and elsewhere. That day will come, but I can't say whether it's next year or 20 years from now. It's hard to know. We need a motion. Now, Mark, you want to?
I'll make a motion to recommend setting aside $500,000 of the funds that will be derived from the surtax citizen oversight, excuse me, the cert county surtax for purposes of projects to be determined by our upcoming workshop.
And that would be included in that motion, accepting the the report from town staff?
On the on the water main?
No, the on the.
So I I think what we're looking for is clarification. You're recommending that the commission retain 500,000 for non-septic to sewer conversion projects and the remaining balance of the septic sewer or of the infrastructure tax be held back for septic.
No, I I didn't say septic to sewer in my motion.
No, I know. You're saying projects to be determined.
In our workshop.
And what I think Mr. Carey is trying to get at is, and what is the recommendation for the remaining money? Because.
Oh, at the at the commission's discretion. Not this commission, the city.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? And we'll leave it at town staff discretion to kind of clean up the language of the motion so that.
I'll perfect my motions in the future.
We they do that for.
We just needed clar, I just wanted clarification so that.
So we'll call the close of the Infrastructure Sure Tax Citizen Oversight Committee meeting is closed.
Thank you.
Thank you.